An overview of the process moving forward. There is no decision that is going to be made tonight. The focus of tonight's meeting is really to get input on the environmental impact report that the city will be preparing as part of this project. As I mentioned, this is a scoping session. And just a little bit of background about the downtown precise plan. The city, after doing extensive public outreach over many, many years, had adopted the downtown precise plan in 2011, which serves as the blueprint for the development of the downtown area. It also sets a development cap on certain land use categories, which I'll go over in just a moment, which includes office, retail, hotel uses, as well as residential units. There was an environmental impact report that was prepared as part of that analysis in 2011. And the city council approved the downtown precise plan with those development caps, as well as certified the environmental impact report that was prepared for that project, which is the downtown precise plan. The reason why we are reviewing the 851 Main Street project as an amendment to the precise plan is because the 851 Main Street project proposes to increase the office development cap in the precise plan area. The goal of the EIR that will be prepared for this project is to determine whether the 851 Main Street project will create new or substantially more severe environmental impacts compared to what was initially evaluated as part of the downtown precise plan EIR. This is to just give you a sense of what we're looking at right now. The project proposes a total of 86,000 square feet of office approximately and 6,900 square feet of retail. Under the current downtown precise plan cap, 500,000 square feet of net new office development is permitted within the downtown precise plan area. And what is being proposed currently is to accommodate the project by increasing the office cap in downtown to 86,000, to increase it to 586,000 square feet overall to accommodate the project. The project is expected to generate approximately, or attract, I should say, approximately 350 to 400 new employees, depending on who the tenant might be if the project is approved. There will also be an underground parking garage with 215 parking stalls proposed with access along Walnut Street. Just to give you some context of where this project site is located, it is within the downtown precise plan area, within the historic Main Street district of downtown. This is the project area here. It is bounded by Broadway, Stanbaugh, Main, and Walnut. Just to go over some of the existing conditions, the project site along Main Street does include a historic resource that is deemed to be preserved under the downtown precise plan. These are the businesses that are currently there right now along Main Street. And what is proposed is to preserve the facade of the historic resources on Main Street and to demolish the adjacent building, which currently houses Farm Hill and a salon. And this is the proposed facade along Main Street. Again, this is the historic resource that is proposed to be preserved. And approximately 75% of the historic walls is also part of the project as well. There is a rooftop courtyard that is proposed along the Main Street frontage here. And then this is the site plan showing just the concept of that landscape plan. Along the Walnut Street side, these are the existing conditions. There is a vacant lot here with two warehouses and then a drive aisle that leads to a storage area in the back. And you can see that back here in green. What is being proposed along the Walnut Street side is the office portion, the majority of the office portion of the project, with access to the underground garage to be located along Walnut Street. There has been significant public outreach on this notice of preparation for the environmental impact report. The city has contracted with MIG to prepare the supplemental EIR. And we have the consultant here to go over the details of the scope of the EIR and what to expect. As part of the city's initial outreach for this meeting, approximately 2,500 notices were sent out. All of the property owners and residents, excuse me, property owners and tenants within the downtown precise plan area, as well as a 300-foot radius around the entire downtown precise plan area. We also posted in the city's social media accounts and also in the local newspapers as required per our code. And additional outreach was also done, as you will see in detail in the staff report that was prepared for this project at this time. I'd like to introduce Ray Pendrow, who is with MIG. He will go over the details of the EIR process.
Hi, I'm Ray Pendrow from MIG. We will help the city staff prepare the supplemental EIR for this project. And our firm prepared the initial downtown precise plan EIR, too. So I'll fill in some environmental impact or environmental SEQA, as it's called, California Environmental Quality Act, information about this. First to introduce, we have not written the EIR yet. This is the introductory meeting and your first chance to comment on what issues you think are important for us to include in that EIR as we write it. Michelle went over the project overview, and I will give you some introductory info on the EIR. The purpose of this meeting, as I introduced, is to inform the community and the decision-makers about the project. That was Michelle's introduction. To receive input on the scope of the supplemental environmental impact report from the planning commission and from the public. And then we have a few slides at the end to show you the sequence of events that will occur, where you get further chance to review the project and the EIR as more information is prepared. The first thing I want to point out is, you see the reference here to a supplemental environmental impact report. That's because this document will supplement the downtown plan EIR that's already been certified and prepared. The reason the supplemental EIR is being prepared, as Michelle said, this project is requesting to go over the office cap that was adopted for the downtown plan. So we need to do further research on whether new or more severe impacts would result from that. SEQA is the California Environmental Quality Act. That's what's requiring this supplemental EIR. And this is what SEQA is intended to do. And these will be discussions in the supplemental EIR. This is the information that Michelle just gave with her earlier slides. And I want to point out, the supplemental EIR will not evaluate, and this project is not proposing any further increase in the downtown plan. It's an increase in the office cap to accommodate only this project. So it's not a larger increase to allow any further development downtown, but to allow The notice of preparation that Michelle mentioned was released on August 26th. Everybody gets 30 days to comment, including tonight, and emails or other written comments, 30 days to comment on what issues should be addressed in the EIR. And that goes till September 27th. And the NOP, which has some of the SEQA information in it and the description of the project is on the city's website. The supplemental EIR will have a chapter on each of these environmental topics, and these match the same titles of the chapters in the downtown precise plan, original EIR. And if you do have comments in writing, it really helps the staff and myself. If you organize them by any of these categories, to give your comments under those categories so we'll know which SEQA or environmental topic you're discussing. There's already a traffic report underway, and these are the study intersections that the traffic engineer is studying for this particular project. And this information will be added to the traffic information that was originally prepared for the downtown plan EIR. And the project site is right near number eight on that map. These are the next steps in the EIR. As I mentioned, it hasn't been written yet. The NOP comment period is till September 27th. There will be a draft supplemental EIR available for a 45-day review period, and there will be at least one public hearing during that 45-day review period. The final EIR will include all of your comments, spoken and written, during that review period with responses to each comment that's related to the EIR. And there will be further public hearings after the final EIR is written and distributed for your opportunity for further comment before any decision is made on this project. And that's to say that tonight is a public hearing for your comments. Thank you.
Clarifying questions?
Quick question. Can you go back to the slide that had the study intersections? I heard you correctly. So these are intersections that are being considered to be studied for this particular project, or are these already underway? I didn't quite understand what you're saying.
The traffic report is being prepared now.
Okay.
So it's looking at these intersections for this particular project.
For this particular project, and no other study is initiating this, or no other project is initiating this study? It's this project?
No, it's for 851 Main Street.
Perfect.
Sorry, through the chair, we do have the applicant team here, who wanted to say a few words about the project. If Mr. Johnson and his team wanted to come up.
I thought you were going to forget about us. Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Planning Commissioners, and residents and attendees tonight, I'm pleased to be here tonight because we're going to be talking about the supplemental EIR for this project. The application for the 851 Main Street project was submitted on November 14, 2014. Over the following nine months, our design team worked with the staff of Redwood City planning staff to improve the project, both aesthetically and operationally. Throughout this process, we enjoyed working with staff. Michelle and Steve and the rest of the staff members worked very hard to improve the project with our team, and we feel like we came out with a great product in the end. We received a completed application on September 1, 2015, about a year ago. So since tonight is the first formal public meeting for this project, I'd like to first introduce the developer, the Acclaim companies. The founder of Acclaim is my brother, Mark. And he founded Acclaim in 1997. He grew up here on the peninsula, attended Woodside High School. I joined Mark six years ago, and I live here in Redwood City with my family. So we're really happy to be developing in Redwood City and to be, I really appreciate being a part of this community. Acclaim, one of the missions for me and Mark is to build structures that build upon the character of the community in which they reside. And over the last five years, here in Redwood City, we've been focusing on a project called, we call Locale. And it's located at 488 Winslow Street. We first started working on Locale in 2012, April 2012. And we just finished construction of Locale about a month ago. It's 133 units of multifamily housing. Four units are below market rate housing. We're proud of Locale. It's a traditional architectural building that fits within the historic context of the adjacent Mezziesville area. And we look forward to operating this project for a long period to come. We tend to hold on to our projects. Now let me turn to the Main Street project, 851 Main Street. In the spring of 2013, over three years ago, we gained control over the parcels on Main Street. The box building had just broken ground, and there was little development underway in the downtown. We went ahead and began putting together a design team that we felt would fit well with this project, and a design team that had experience working within historic districts since we were aware that the Main Street historic district was at that point adjacent. And now our building's been included in the district. We went searching for the right architect and the right team. And that search ended when we found Tom Gilman at DES, who had experience with redeveloping and redesigning the museum in Courthouse Square. DES has also had a design many of the traditional structures in Palo Alto. So as we know, the 851 Main Street project exceeds the maximum allowed development under the EIR for the downtown precise plan. So we have agreed to pursue an environmental impact report in order to understand more completely the environmental impacts of this development on the surrounding environment. We've also agreed with the city to pay for this report, and we're happy to be here tonight to discuss the scope of the EIR. Over the past year, we've reached out to community members, neighbors, residents, retailers, members of the business community and cultural and of the cultural and arts community in Redwood City. And those discussions have led to two workshops that we had this summer, where we were able to present the project to many people, to these groups in the downtown area and surrounding area, and solicit their feedback on the project. I'm here to report that support for the project is strong. We received a lot of support at these meetings and a lot of great feedback from these groups and individuals that have a stake in the downtown and want the downtown to be a very successful area of commerce, of fun, and a place where we can all be proud of. This support, though, we were advised by staff that this meeting is more about the scope of the EIR. And so we didn't feel that this was the proper venue to bring out and show that support. We want to maintain consideration for the framework and scope of this meeting by focusing on the topics evaluated in the supplemental EIR. So I'd like to now hand the time over to Tom Gilman, who can speak more specifically about the Main Street project, the 851 Main project. Thanks.
I'm Tom Gilman with DES Architects in Redwood City. So I have a few slides, and I'll just quickly go through these, just to give you a little better overview of the project itself. And which of these, is it this guy? Okay, so just quickly, a couple of images along Main Street showing the context, very small scale, a lot of one-story, some two-story, but relatively small scale and very pedestrian or human-scaled texture along Main Street. And so that's the context with which we're working. At the bottom of this diagram, you can see the historic Main Street facade of the historic building. And again, it's sort of a three-part piece. That will be preserved, and in fact, we'll be refurbishing that, which is not required by the downtown plan, but we'll actually be bringing this back to its, you know, original state, if you will. You can see the blue area there on this diagram is that portion of the building that's retained. The other structures on-site will be demolished. Just kind of sort of looking at how that building relates then to the footprint of the proposed building. And as staff had noted, one of the requirements is that we retain 75% of the exterior walls. So we'll be, it's not only that initial facade out on the street, but also a portion of the interior concrete walls as well. Just, oh, the one comment I wanted to make was that total building area is 86, a little over 86,000, but the net new square footage is about 70,000. So I'm sure that the EIR will take that into consideration. Just an overview here of the massing of the building. We've tried hard to maintain that same kind of scale and fit into the context along Main Street. And you can see at the lower left of the building, that is the one-story historic structure, and it will have a roof terrace that will extend back onto the roof of that area of about 40 feet. And then, per the downtown plan, we were able to add for one-story addition, the second 40 feet, so that goes back 80 feet. And as you can see, the other portions to the right side here are the additional, the office spaces that steps down as well. And again, on that second floor in the lower left, and then those two roof areas on the third floor, those are all new green spaces, terraces that'll be places for folks to be able to go out, have outdoor meetings, have lunch, and that kind of thing. Just quickly, I'll just shoot through these. These are some of the floor plans. Section here, the garage plan, two levels of underground parking. We're providing two and a half cars per thousand, and we'll be paying the in-lu fees for the last .5 to get up to three cars per thousand. Just some, one of the requirements is that this site also be neoclassical architecture. So these are just some of the images in terms of studies, as we did research on the various building styles. And again, a couple of images along Main Street, seeing both the historic structure will be retained, and then also the new building. And you can see how the building steps down to the street, so it maintains that same scale and texture that Main Street has currently. And one of the things that we're also doing, that's not a requirement, but we're actually, all of that existing building will be maintained as retail. So it'll actually add about 7,000 square feet of retail vitality to Main Street, so helping reinforce the foot traffic along Main Street. Just another image then at the rear, on the upper window, we're looking across the Oddfellows parking lot. And then the lower floor, the lower image, Savers is just to the left, and then that's the entrance to the underground parking. And again, back to the front view. So we're here, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions? Okay, we have a public hearing. I have three speakers' cards, and another one coming. My first speaker is Richard Keyes, who will be followed by Chris Johnson.
Hello, I'm Richard, excuse me, I'm Richard Keyes. I saw news about this in the paper and went out on Sunday to look at the old buildings. There's a giant placard across the street that commemorates the history of that part of Main Street. Al Hambro Theater, Oddfellows Lodge, Masons, things like that. Haven't seen a lot of this, except just now on the screen. I'm not sure if they're going to incorporate the history of the place, about what kind of place it was, and things like that. But I think the main issue is kind of a dumping ground for cars. There's not enough parking. It's being adjusted 215 out of 400. And Walnut Street is not only very, very narrow, it's hard to traverse, but at the end of it, it has all kinds of strange ways to go. Nothing's smooth, and Main Street doesn't have any parking. So I think that it's not paying its way for what they're going to gain with the 400 employees. But they have to, I think, have enough parking and other aspects to commemorate the area before it could be approved.
Thank you. Chris Johnson, followed by Stephanie Colca.
Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Chris Johnson. I've been a resident of Redwood City for 15 years. And just to clarify for the record, no relation to Mr. Gary Johnson, the developer on this project. I know we look a lot alike. I'd like to start out by reading a passage from the downtown precise plan EIR. "The impact analysis in this EIR," it's up on the screen, "are based on the conservative and most intensive development assumption that the DPP will be fully successful in meeting its objectives, and as a result, the DPP area will reach full build-out under the DPP parameters over the approximately 20 years." We're five years into the plan. So when our vice mayor suggested at the March 14 city council meeting on this project that since we were at the cap, maybe it's time to get a report back from staff. Let's get the status of the plan five years into it. Are we meeting the goals? Which goals have been met? What's working? What's not working? And what else do we need to do to meet the goals of the plan? And then, after outreach to the community, do we then consider raising a cap for a project that will help us meet our goals? So I had high hopes after that meeting, because there were also other city council members who expressed concerns about raising the cap. But instead of a session six months later, today, to discuss the next phase of the DTPP, we're here advancing another project along. I hope you can understand why this has many Redwood City residents concerned. I'm also a little curious on how a traffic study is already underway, given this is the first public meeting on this project, and you're here to determine the scope of the EIR. We all know traffic is a large part of the EIR, and that has already been commented. And I'm sorry, but I was at that city council meeting, and that direction was not agreed upon by the majority of the council that evening. So how are we here to discuss the scope of the EIR with traffic being a huge component if that traffic study is already underway? So I don't understand the disconnect there. And just like the inner harbor specific plan that came before you last week, we're asking the planning commission to consider a project before we have discussed the plan, and that's the wrong sequence of event. If this project was operating in a vacuum, we could judge it purely on its merits. I like the project. I've met with Mr. Johnson. He's the most likable developer I've met in the last two years. And I say that very sincerely. He builds good stuff. But we have, we don't operate in a vacuum here. We have millions of square feet of development that's already on the books. So I recognize this agenda, this item, this isn't your doing. This is delivered to you by staff with direction from council, and there's no vote on the project this evening. But as you discuss the particulars of the EIR for this project, I would like you to remember this last slide I'm putting up. And what this does is, it shows you, as a percentage of full build-out of the DTPP, that it shows you that we only have a small portion of office and housing as a net. that it shows you that we only have a small portion of office and housing as a net percentage currently online. So the office percentage is 34%, and the housing percentage is 24% of the total commitment of the downtown precise plan. So we're already feeling the impacts of development, and instead of addressing those impacts, we're advancing a project along. I don't understand that. In closing, I would also hope for clarification from staff as to how they devise the 350 to 400 employee account on the report. Our very own Assistant City Manager, Mr. Ernacken, used as 200 square feet, and that's on the high end, given the tech clients this building will attract. If we use 200 square feet per employee, that gives us 430 employees, which is up to 20% higher than the employee account on the staff report. I would encourage the commission to know what employee counts we are dealing with as we progress the discussion this evening. Thank you very much for your considerations to these issues.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Stephanie Colka, followed by Mary Lee Robinson.
My name is Stephanie Colka, and I'm a resident and own Brick Monkey and Brick Monkey Squared. I believe 851 Main Street has a right to move ahead with the EIR, and that the current scope of the EIR is more than adequate to understand the environmental impacts of the project. The notice of preparation lists the scope items, and one of the scope items that we all can agree needs to be studied is transportation and circulation. I know that the transportation study has been increased from eight intersections to 12 per city staff's recommendation. I think those intersections will give us a great idea of the traffic impacts of this project. Thank you.
Mary Lee Robinson, that is my last speaker card. If anyone wants to speak, raise your hand when Mary Lee's done.
Come on up. My name's Mary Lee Robinson. Thanks for holding this meeting that you are asking for our input. I appreciate that. I wholeheartedly agree with Chris Johnson. We need to hold back the reins, especially not going, exceeding the caps so early on in the longevity of the plan. I do want to say, I like the design. I like how it's leveled with setbacks. But I am frustrated with all the development that's going on, and we haven't seen the results of all this action that's going on yet. And I appreciate a pause on development in general, but specifically when it goes above and beyond the limitations. Thank you.
Do I have any more speakers? Mr. Bizarro? You'll fill out a card when you're done.
Hi, my name is, my name is, I'm used to using one of these, but it's getting tough. There you go. My name is Frank Bizarro, and I own the building called Angelica's, which is right next to the proposed plan of 851. I'll give you a quick history. I came to Redwood City in 1983, and I was the tenant at 851. We actually just rented the back little warehouse back there, because my wife was refinishing furniture, and I was repairing it. That's how we started, 1983. The front buildings, in fact, 849 and 851, were boarded up. There was no business on Main Street at all. It was being used as a warehouse, and the doors were boarded up. And also, Angelica's was also boarded up. There were five saloons or bars on Main Street. It was a very dangerous place to live, or even walk down. We waited with the chins for 20, 25 years, and we just stand in front of the doorway, and we were just waiting for the rush to come. Just waiting, waiting. Anyway, people came and went, but we persevered and stayed for 17 years as a tenant at Chins, which owned 851, 849. In that time, we obviously progressed forward with our auction business and several other real estate ventures that we were in. But what I'm trying to bring to a close is that we do need the development. It's been a long time waiting. Some of the things that we've had in the past, and obviously, the EIR will address the bolts and stops and starts of all the things that we need. But progress is absolutely necessary for, for any city to grow. And we have had an amicable relationship with the Johnsons in relationship to the impact that that building will do to Peter and Angelica's business, and we're getting along fine with them. So yeah, obviously, we're absolutely behind that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? You'll fill out a speaker card when you're done.
I'm Peter Kisheri. I'm the owner of Angelica's. And we put our heart and soul into that business, which I think a lot of people are pretty much aware of. But we've been surrounded by a lot of garbage. And when the Johnsons, when I got to meet the Johnsons and they showed me the development...
That's not really for you.
Something happened?
Nope, nope. Never mind.
I thought it was the gong show. I thought the gong was going to go off. Anyway, to make a long story short, we've been sort of alone while the rest of, you know, Redwood City has been developed and going crazy. We've had to be on our own for a long time. And when they proposed the drawings and everything to us, I've got to admit, I got excited. I got excited saying, finally, Main Street is going to become something in Redwood City. I realize there's a lot of different impacts, but nothing more can impact it than we right next door. And obviously, they're going to work really hard towards us. And I trust Gary a lot, and I trust his brother a lot, because they are residents of Redwood City like I am, and they show up to work at Redwood City like I do. So that's just my little input to there, and I'll be here for the rest of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
Public hearing?
We have one more. And she's going to fill out a speaker card when she's done. Everyone's getting inspired.
I'm super nervous. My name is Linda Hoya. I figured I can't vent my frustrations on social media without having the courage to come up here. So it's always easy to kind of hide behind a computer, but not, like I said, have the courage to stand up here. But basically, I came tonight because, you know, I'm a Redwood City resident. I grew up in, actually, San Mateo, but, you know, worked at Price Club when Costco was Price Club as a kid. And so I had friends that went to Woodside Sequoia, landed at moving to Redwood City. We all kind of, people that grew up here, we all kind of stay on the peninsula and just kind of move city to city. But I have a home in Redwood City, and within the last few years, I just feel like the traffic has gotten so ridiculous that I can't, I'm a stay-at-home mom recently, a couple of years. I can't kind of drive down the street. I can't find a place to park. And the buildings keep going up, and I look at it like, I want progress, but it seems like no one is really taking the time to look at how, you know, someone really moves around their city and finds a place to eat, or goes to the grocery store and waits in line with 20 people. You're packed in the grocery store. It's like, I'm looking at it going, are they building these buildings and paying attention to what other things we need? Or are they just meaning like, more gas stations, more grocery stores? We're in a drought, like, more people are coming here? I mean, I just kind of look at it like, if, if I come up and speak and just kind of talk for the average person and say, is anybody paying attention to how it affects just the average kind of person that's not like working downtown? Or, you know, it's great if you don't really move, you leave your house and you go to work on Main Street and then go back home. But what about the people that are, you know, going during the day and driving around and can't move and can't just get around town? It's just, I, I kind of want to reiterate what Chris Johnson said, and he and I have emailed back and forth, though he doesn't know me, but that no one, when I looked at the list of the things, the buildings that are on the books that are coming, is anybody taking the time to like, like you said, step back and see where we are right now with what's happening and what's building, and see the impact? And, and that's, that is about it.
Okay.
But thank you.
Thank you. Last call.
Chair Radcliffe, do you mind if I make a few comments? Just a couple of items from staff's presentation and the applicant's presentation as well that I did want to mention. So the applicant has been working on this application for some time with the city. As he mentioned, the application was submitted to the city in 2014. And over the months, the applicant has been working to get the application to a, what's essentially a complete stage, meaning that the project materials essentially comply with the technical requirements that we need in order to properly review the application and really start the SEQA process. We're really at the beginning stages of this project. So we're really at the start of the formal review. Certainly, this request for a scoping session for the EIR is really kicks off the process, the SEQA process tonight. It in no way is a signal that staff is supportive of the project. We have not made a recommendation to the Planning Commission or the city council on this project. This is really the beginning stages for us to gather information, to conduct that analysis, and then come up with conclusions through, through the SEQA process. So although we've been working on this project for a long time, we're really at the beginning stages of the formal, formal process. So I just wanted to mention that as a clarity. Oh, and actually, one more thing regarding traffic, that although we have a traffic study that is underway and is looking at certain intersections, we are also in that period where we can add on additional intersections if needed. And part of this process is to get those comments from the public. If the public believes that there are additional intersections that we need to study, we can certainly accommodate that at this stage. We're not beyond a certain point where we cannot consider any additional analysis or information that the public may provide. In fact, this is the appropriate time to do so. So if we get comments such that additional intersection should be studied, we can take that into advisement and determine whether or not to include those intersections in the study.
And then, once we have the draft EIR, draft supplemental EIR, there'll also be another chance for the public to make comments as far as what's in it, and correct?
That's correct.
So we have a long ways to go. Great. Thank you. Close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing? Second?
So moved, excuse me, all in favor, I should say.
Aye.
So moved, public hearing is closed. Okay, discussion among commission? Points you want to make sure that is, are included? Commissioner Bondano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we know, so thank you, Mr. Turner, for starting to help kind of clarify the process procedurally. We actually kind of have to go through certain steps. We're required by California law to do so. So while I appreciate all of the comments that were made this evening, just want to be a little bit cautionary in the sense that we're not necessarily, we're moving through a process of an applicant submitting an application to the city, who has every right to do so, and the city does not have a right to tell them, no, you can't apply, and no, you can't ask for starting the environmental review as is required by California state law. That's what SEQA stands for, California Environmental Quality Act. So I just want to be a little cautionary that, you know, we're not, we're not advancing a project. We're starting to study the possible impacts of a, of a project that's been proposed. And so I'm, I'm looking to staff to keep me honest here, that that's the case. So the applicant has every right to submit an application, and by doing so, the city now is required to start a review process for the environmental impacts. And I guess this is going to start to get to my line of questioning, to confirm procedurally that we're going to go through, that's why, because it's part of the downtown precise plan, or part of the downtown precise plan area, where they've, they've asked to say, hey, we want to go ahead and pay for studying a supplemental environmental impact report. That's to say that there are very, there are requirements on certain topics that we talk about that need to be studied for environmental impacts throughout the city, like, like the land use, the aesthetics, the geology, air quality, noise. Transportation and circulation's already been mentioned, which I agree wholeheartedly that that needs to be studied. And then potentially, there's some other areas that we would, would like to study. And those are for the environmental considerations and impact. So let me get to my first question finally. When it comes to something like a MAD cap, that's policy that's been set by the council and the city, but that's not necessarily like an environmental consideration, right? So the fact that what's being proposed, if it were to be considered, might require someone to extend the cap to allow it to go forward, that's actually not the point where we're at in this process. Mr. Turner?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. All that for a simple yes? Thanks. And so before I get too far, let me also remind everybody that, in fact, whenever decisions are going to be made, recommendations might be formulated, recommendations might be forwarded, decisions, votes might be taken, that the environmental impact report is but one of the pieces of information that this body will actually take into consideration before it would actually decide to move something along in the approval process. And so I just, for myself personally, I'm like doing this to remind myself that, in fact, MAD caps, office development caps, clearly are part of the ultimate decision-making process, but that's actually sort of separate and on, on a side from the scoping of something very specific, which is a SEQA document, environmental impact report tonight.
Yes, that's correct. Really, the purpose of tonight's item is to take a look at the supplemental EIR and the topics that would be studied within it that are listed on your screen. Those are the SEQA required topics. But certainly, underneath those topics, are there any other types of information that the public or the commission may want to have studied in the realm of the SEQA universe? So if it's related to a SEQA category or impact, then we can certainly study, study that.
Fantastic. So specific to SEQA now, we also know that the, that this study and the resulting EIR would need to look at certain project alternatives. And so we always know that the proposal is, is the first thing that's studied. One of the required alternatives to look at is what's called the no project, and that's been discussed in the staff report that we have in front of us. And then, but then we do, in the staff report, have this bullet that says, you know, one or more alternative scenarios will be evaluated depending on the impacts identified. So here's my question. Do, does staff have an idea of what other alternatives we're going to be considering at this point?
One of the alternatives that is typically discussed within EIRs is a reduced project alternative, and that's an alternative that, as its name suggests, is a, is a project that is smaller or reduced from the main project in a way that reduces most, if not all, of any significant impacts that may have been identified through the process. So that is usually considered an alternative that's studied, and for the decision-makers, it allows the decision-makers the opportunity to perhaps review and approve a reduced project that would be consistent with a certified environmental document.
Okay. Okay, fantastic. And so, again, now, just specific to SEQA, we've already identified, I, my count is there's three. I think there was three bullets where already the, the proposed application would have three deviations from the downtown precise plan. One would be the office cap, that's not necessarily a SEQA thing, but the other two remaining ones would be, and that's the Main Street sidewalk width, and then, but what's actually probably top of my mind would be the building disposition type. And specifically within that is the fact that this is in a three-story zone on Main Street. So, so I guess if, if not already being considered, can we look at that reduced project or some alternative which would have the project completely fit within all the existing downtown precise plan regulations?
Yes, that would, that's a very good comment. Thank you for that. We will, we will note that, and that certainly may be an appropriate alternative. Speaking of kind of along those lines, the project does involve a historic resource to be preserved. An alternative could be, an alternative that does preserve that, that structure in a way that, as the current project proposes, it would kind of encompass the building, you know, and, but maintain those walls. An alternative, you know, could also be looking at a way where the building is actually, remains on the, I guess, as exterior walls, and so the building is perhaps built around it rather than kind of engulfing it. And what are the comparable environmental impacts of, of a project that kind of encompasses a building versus one that is built around it? That, that's an alternative that can be, be looked at.
So you read my mind, because that was going to be my last, my last point, that I, I would like to consider an alternative which would maintain the building, the historic resource, as is or as close to as is as possible without, as is, yeah, certainly. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'm glad you, you did that introduction there, Commissioner Bondano, because I was going to ask a similar question, is what aspects of the project, you know, should we take into account for our discussions tonight? And they really do center around the EIR and the environmental impact. So with that, there are a couple intersections I think we need to add. In particular, surprised to not see anything on Chestnut, since I'm sure our creative commuters will probably want to get off of Veterans, off of 101 Woodside Veterans, and then figure out how to go from Veterans and Chestnut. And if it were me, I would even look at either Spring and Chestnut or Hilton and Chestnut. So I think definitely Veterans and Chestnut and probably Hilton and Chestnut would be something to consider to add. I also think Woodside and Middlefield for those coming from 280. I think we'll want to add that as well for consideration. And then, potentially, Veterans and, what is it right here? Walnut? Either Veterans and Walnut or probably more likely Veterans and Maple. Again, I know that when traffic starts to get concentrated, it's kind of like stepping on ants, they all scatter. And so I'm sure that we'll see a lot of creative uses of, of the roadways there near downtown. So that was the first thing. With regards to, one of our speakers tonight kind of commented on the estimation of square foot per employee. It would be good that when we understand that, that there's some data behind it. For my employer, when we do major office remodels, the numbers that are presented seem to be quite generous in terms of square footage per employee. I, I think current ranges for technology startups in the Bay Area, anywhere range from 125 to 225 square feet per employee, and that's coming direct from a person who did an office remodel just a couple of years ago for a tech company. So, so not that those are the right numbers, but that whatever numbers we come up with, that there's some data based on that for the kind of tenant that we might be looking for. And I think the applicant, or in the report, suggested a technology company. So that would be helpful for us to understand that. And I would also, as second Commissioner Bondano's, alternatives to consider is one that fits within the disposition and heights specifically along Walnut. So with that, as well as preserving the building or the, the original walls, but at least from how that might be programmed, allowing public access. So, so considering there might be retail there, preserving some of the, those walls and having some way of highlighting that the fact that's the original wall or not, I think would be appropriate alternative than just opening it wide. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hunter?
I have to say, I appreciate Commissioner Bondano's comments about trying to put this into the framework of SEQA, because I have some comments, in particular, the mix of retail and commercial, which I think are appropriate to bring up at this meeting, but I'm not quite sure how to put it into SEQA. So that was, that was a helpful background. And I, I guess we, we can't really completely divorce this meeting from the, the background, which is that, you know, we are billed out under the, you know, MAD, the 500,000 square feet of office. There is some sentiment on the council as well as the community for maybe looking, looking at where we are and what we should, you know, reassessing where we are in the downtown plan. So that's kind of background that I think we need to take into account, even though if it's not a strictly SEQA, you know, item, one of the 15 items. So that being said, I think the concern that I had looking through here is the retail and commercial mix. And I guess this would go to land use, it would go probably to cultural heritage if that's where historical resources would come under, certainly under traffic. And what really, what, what shocked me actually, when I looked at the numbers in the, in the plan there, is under this, if I'm reading this right, under the plan, there is going to be, the plan proposes less retail than there is now, which is contrary to the whole reason presented for, for, for having this project. The project, the justification for increasing, for having this, this project and increasing the MAD cap is to, you know, some of the quotes from the architect and the applicant, to revitalize the retail, the retail uses in this neighborhood, and new pedestrian energy in this area. Enliven, extend, and enrich the pedestrian-friendly neighborhood, and it's all about retail. But currently, according to the documents that we received, there is 6,704 square foot of restaurant and 1,00623 of salon. So that's 8,327 square feet currently of retail, and the proposal is of 6,910, which is a 17% reduction. Part of the reason for that is because the, the frontage, a third of the frontage is actually going to be the lobby of the new office. And I guess maybe for the benefit of the applicant too, that was something that we discussed a few meetings ago, which I think council has not, I think we recommended to council, the new, you know, active uses on Main Street proposal. So I don't think that's city law yet, but assuming the council approves that, I think, I think part of what we talked about, and maybe somebody can refresh my memory, but I think we talked about not having that type of setup on Main Street where you can have a blank space facing the street and then offices behind it. So I think that is one change that probably needs to be made. So I don't know how, if that all directly relates to SEQA, but I think it's things to be considered.
Thank you. Hello? Thank, good. Thank you, Chair. I had a lot of questions, but I want to thank Vice Chair Bondano for your eloquent words in regards to, you know, the applicant and the process and, you know, the rights of
property owners. I did want to ask a couple of questions in regards to, God, my questions are always parking and traffic because it kind of affects all of us, right? So, you know, when I was looking at the, at the proposal and looking at Walnut Streets, my question, one of the questions that I had was, you know, I go to, I don't know, I go to grocery outlet quite a bit and shop around, but I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to walk that street. So my question with regards to this project is, is it appropriate to, for the developer to request or the developer to make off-site improvements? I know that that street is, you know, the lights. So that, you know, that's one of the questions that I would have for that, if, if that's appropriate, because, you know, it does, it's much needed. There's a lot of needs on Walnut Streets, as far as I'm concerned. So that's one of the things. With the transportation and circulation, actually going back to parking, the parking that is going to be, the parking spots that are going to be available for the public, I'd want to see if there can be some clarification about weekends and night parking and what it would cost. I do understand that it's going to be available. There were other projects that are in the city where, you know, it was presented that it would be available for people on the weekends and after hours. But, you know, you're, you end up paying for it, and to me, you know, I hate paying for parking. So I just, you know, want to get some clarification about that. I know I have to at some point, but, like, yeah, so I'd like to know how much it would cost for a weekend in parking. Off-site improvements? And then, just going back to what Commissioner Hunter talked about with regards to, I think it was our, the Planning Commission recommendation to the City Council in regards to retail on Main Street, I just want to know if, I guess my, you know, question is, would that support our recommendation to, to City Council in regards to retail on Main Street? And then, let's see, I had so many notes, but I think we've discussed some of the other things. Oh, one other thing, in regards to parking again, I don't know if there's any way to come back and get a, a report or an update in regards to downtown parking. You know, there's, I've heard that there, the county's going to be creating a parking structure. I'd like to know if the, if the other parking structures are being used, like, throughout the day. I know that, you know, I don't, I live in Redwood City, I don't, I work in San Mateo, and I work in San Mateo, I don't work in Redwood City, but I'd like to know about parking availability during the day, during the business hours, if there's any way to get some kind of report.
Yeah, certainly, Commissioner Gray, certainly that particular question probably wouldn't be particularly steady within the EIR for this project, but I can tell you that I believe soon the City Council is going to be having a study session regarding downtown parking. And so I think when council has that discussion with staff, we'll be able to provide a lot of the background information that, that you brought up tonight.
Thank you, and I think that, I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bondano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quickly, I, I wanted to thank Commissioner Hunter for his comments, and believe you me, I am not at all ignoring the MAD cap that's there for office development. And certainly, that is going to be a very big factor in any future decisions that would, would be considered. I guess I just was pointing out that, that just doesn't help someone write an EIR, which is very prescriptive on what it entails and what it's, what it's actually studying. But you're spot on in that land use is the lever that we use to take a look at retail and active uses on Main Street and for what it's zoned. So I'm, I'm totally in agreement with that as well for exactly those, those same considerations that you brought up, maybe that there are the proposals of reduction in retail and whether or not this fits with exactly what our recommendation was, because I think I, I talked about it a lot and three, four weeks ago, and used the example of, hey, there's some threshold where the entrance to some office behind the scenes is too much of the frontage we're trying to keep active. So thank you for bringing that up.
Any other comments? Okay, I only have a couple of things to add. As far as traffic is concerned, I would like to add the entrance of Main Street and El Camino Woodside Road. That is a definite entryway into downtown, and I think traffic should be studied at that point. Also, if we can just have any information on, and this is going to be a hard category, but for a retail store, you need active space. So I recall in other study sessions that if you have a blank wall, you need a good 25 feet before the pedestrian becomes re-involved in looking at the, what is ever along their pathway. So kind of, I'm not exactly sure how to phrase this, but how, what is the least amount of, what's the space that we can tolerate to keep the street active? Is that, you understand what I'm trying for, Mr. Pedro? Yes, because you're the one who's going to be looking for this information.
From the SEQA point of view, that would be related, without my knowing all the details, of the bay minimum distances that are standards in the downtown plan that require street-level buildings to have bays 20 feet wide and not longer, and if they have a bay, a blank bay that's longer than 20 feet wide, that is a deviation request. So I think that that type of detail is already embedded in the downtown plan.
Okay.
With, is this project consistent with those standards and guidelines?
Okay, great. Thank you for the clarification. Okay. Staff and Mr. Pendrow have enough information to go forward?
To the Chair, I actually have one clarifying question for Commissioner White regarding the intersections that you had requested. I just want to be sure we got it correctly. I have five intersections that we were going to add, and I'm just going to list them here, and please correct me if, if, if I don't have it correct. Veterans and Chestnut, Hilton and Chestnut, Woodside and Middlefield, Veterans and Maple, and the last one, I, I couldn't get the last one. It was Veterans and something else.
Oh, you had Veterans and, I said Veterans and Walnut.
As the last one. Okay. And then, to add Commissioner Radcliffe's, Main Street and El Camino?
Great. Great. Okay, so, all right, so that is our roundup of the scoping session for this supplemental environmental impact report. Thank you, everyone, for coming. We have some other things on our agenda, so you don't have to stay, but you're welcome to. Matters of commission interest, Mr. Turner?
Sure, just to report out on our next meeting, we do not have any items scheduled for our September 20th meeting, so that meeting will be canceled. Yes. Don't too excited, Commissioner Hunter. So our next regularly scheduled meeting would-